All right, ladies and gentlemen, we'll call this meeting to order. This is the November 3rd. It's part of the November 3rd Sedalia City Council meeting. It's part of the 2025-2026 session. The first item on our agenda is legislative prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Chaplain Mattson, you have the floor.
Could you stand as able and join me in our invocation this evening? Dear Lord, Father of us all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the Sedalia City Council, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, board members, all of the staff who serve this community, as they meet, to hear about, to question, discuss, and make decisions for the betterment of our city. We are truly grateful for their dedication and their service to this community. We ask your protection for all of our first responders who were 24/7 to serve and protect us, often at their own peril. And tonight particularly, we have some service awards that we are so grateful for, the service to our city. Greg Smith, Fire Captain, 30 years' service. Michael Elwood, Police Commander, 15 years' service. Gary Laboo, Vehicle Maintenance Lead Mechanic, 15 years. Vicky Skrzak, Finance, five years' service. Joshua Holston, Street Equipment Operator, five years. Joseph Dirk, Building Maintenance, five years' service. We are so glad for people who come to serve this community and stay and be part of our great city. We are grateful for the United States of America, this constitutional republic. So many have fought, thousands fought and died to create and preserve for these 250 years. We ask your protection and your blessing for all of those civilians and all of the military serving this great country today, here and throughout the world, and we hope that they are brought home safely to their families. And now, as we leave this evening, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again. And all this is prayed in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Ames.
Here.
Scribner.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
All right, first item on our agenda is service awards. For that, we will begin by inviting Chief Irwin up to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. If I could have Captain Smith come up as well, please. So I have worked on this, cut things out, started things, doing everything. So I thought I would start this off with, it was a cold September day in 1995, when a young man from Lamont came in to interview for a position that would be given to him in October. I have joked with year, for years with Greg about his interview. I interviewed right behind him. And during my interview, Chief Ditzfeld asked me more questions about Captain Smith than he did about my own, what I could offer the city. I should have known. From that beginning, Greg started a career that has now spanned 30 years. And in that time, he has seen it, he has seen it all. Changes within the department, going from just going out on a call if it's a fire to now running medical calls. He has seen large spectacular fires, small fires, and everything in between. From commendation letters to lifesave awards, Greg has accomplished a great deal. He is the person everybody goes to for help, for answers, and for direction. He has mentored so many and trained so many of us that this department would not be what it is today without his constant support, understanding, and guidance. The job has not always been easy, and I know I haven't always been the easiest person to work with, but through it all, Greg has shown incredible amount of grace. Even when he didn't agree with the decision, he's offered us support and professionalism. He is just not a firefighter. He's one of the finest men that I've ever had the privilege to know and work besides. From wildcard games to World Series, Champions, and Super Bowl victories, Greg has always been passionate about a few key things in his life: his family, his friends, local sports, and this department. Although he's reached 30 years of service, I don't know how much longer he plans to stay before he decides to hang it up and retire. But I hope he gives me a few more years to continue training and mentoring the next generation of firefighters. Greg, congratulations on 30 years of dedicated service to the city. I am proud to not only work with you, but to call you my friend. Congratulations. And you can, if you'd like to speak, you can.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to call up Commander Michael Elwood, please. Good news is, mine is not as long as Chief Irwin's, so it doesn't mean it's short. Commander Michael Elwood started at the Police Department on October 3rd, 2010, as a night shift patrol officer. Mike worked on patrol for about four and a half years before transferring to the Criminal Investigations Bureau Drug Enforcement Unit in 2014. Commander Elwood joined the Warrant Service team a year later. After working as a narcotics investigator for a few years, he went back to patrol, obtaining the rank of Sergeant in 2018. Mike ran the Y-rotation night shift, leading his squad on patrol. As a sergeant, Mike could be counted on to provide the public with great police service, both on the street and behind the scenes. In February of 2024, Sergeant Elwood promoted to Commander. Mike has served as the Criminal Investigations Bureau Commander, running the Leighton Investigation Unit, Crime Resolution Unit, Dare Unit, and Drone Unit. Along with those duties, Mike has been instrumental in bringing fresh initiatives and perspectives to command staff, helping us to improve our public service function and improve officers' opportunities inside the agency for an even better work-life balance. Mike, it is my pleasure to present you the 15-year pin, and I'm excited to see what the next 15 years brings.
I'd like to introduce Vicky Skrzak. Vicky has contributed to the Finance Department for all of the five years that she has been with the City of Sedalia. Vicky oversees utility billing. I continue to be impressed with her desire to learn the full function of the water meters and her ability to understand and manage the billing system. Not only does Vicky have an aptitude for billing, but she also has a big heart for the community and the citizens that we serve. I'm thankful for her leadership in customer service and for her compassion for the citizens
We'll now invite up Administrator Work.
Joe, you want to come on up? Bring out anybody you'd like to as well. A lot of folks probably recognize Joe. He's a soft-spoken man, usually pretty quiet, and you'll see him anywhere around the city. He's one of our building maintenance workers. And what's interesting about building maintenance is that sounds like that's simple, you just maintain buildings. But if you think about all the different facilities that we have in the city, and all the different systems, and all the different parts and pieces that make this city go around, he's one of those guys that has to show up on sometimes a very short notice and try to figure it out. So you can only imagine the amount of times that he stood and probably scratched his head and looked at something, but ultimately figured it out. And we greatly appreciate all his hard work and everything he's done. And last year, anybody that was on the Christmas float realizes that he's also one of the guys that was there at the last minute, making sure everything went together and went together well. So, Joe, we greatly appreciate your hard work and dedication.
The next item on our agenda is approval of the previous session meeting minutes. And the first one we have to approve is the special council meeting minutes from the October 17th, 2025 meeting. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding those meeting minutes? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now we have the meeting minutes from the regular council meeting dated October 20th, 2025. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding those meeting minutes? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now we have the meeting minutes from the special council meeting. These are dated October 24th, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding those meeting minutes? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Now we have the Finance and Administration, under our roll call of standing committees. Chairman Bogus, you have the floor.
Thank you. There is one item for consideration through the Finance Administration Committee tonight. This is a call for the general election on April 7th, 2026. This will be for mayor, one councilman from each of the four wards, and one additional councilman for the first ward to fill an unexpired one-year term.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-183.
Bill Number 2025-183. An ordinance calling a general election to be held on April 7, 2026, for the purpose of electing a mayor and one councilman from each of the four wards in the city of Sedalia, Missouri, and for the purpose of electing one additional councilman from the first ward in the city of Sedalia, Missouri, to fill an unexpired term for one year due to a vacancy occurring in such office.
Second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill Number 2025-183. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-183. An ordinance calling a general election to be held on April 7, 2026, for the purpose of electing a mayor and one councilman from each of the four wards in the city of Sedalia, Missouri, and for the purpose of electing one additional councilman from the first ward in the city of Sedalia, Missouri, to fill an unexpired term for one year due to a vacancy occurring in such office.
Final pass. Second.
I have a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill Number 2025-183. Do I have any council discussion regarding the final passage of this bill? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Scribner.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion passes. And thank you, Chairman Bogus. Up next, we have Public Safety. Chairman Scribner, you have the floor.
Thank you. We have two items for consideration through Public Safety Committee. The first one is Director Danielle Lauder will provide a presentation for the upcoming budget year for Pettis County Joint Communications to include a review of the year and upcoming needs.
Hello and good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. I always appreciate having the opportunity to discuss 911 and what we do. I know it's been a full year, so we've got several things that I'd like to show you. One of the biggest adventures that we had this year was that Pettis County 911 was the recipient of a $1.2 million grant that actually upgraded our call handling services and is also delivering a next-generation 911 call handling platform, which is something that we discussed last year, that will actually speed the delivery of the call to the call takers and will open up the opportunity for text 911. Once that platform is delivered, it's anticipated to be delivered to the end of December of this year. We've also been participating with an AED registry integration. One of two employees will not know where an AED is located inside of a building, and we have partnered with the registry to incorporate that specific information into our call handling protocols, where when someone calls 911, we can actually direct them as to where the AED is in the building where they're physically located at. We had to physically survey Pettis County, and we have many registered and are adding to them daily. We've also entered into a call-to-care program with other area responders and working through public education initiatives. And our year-to-date ACE Quality Assurance for EMS, we are measuring over 93% compliance with all AEDs, I'm sorry, IAED, which is the International Academy of Emergency Dispatch Standards, and across all critical and major categories for fire and EMS. So it's very difficult to reach that particular quality. Most centers don't reach it until about year six to eight, and since we just experienced our five-year mark, I think we're in a great place for that. Our call volume has increased year over year. These particular stats were pulled just a couple weeks ago, so we are already on track to surpass everything that we did in 2024. In 2024, we processed 54,702 administrative calls, and when these stats were pulled, we were already at 43 and some change. And 911 is quickly closing in on the 2024 stats. For 2024, we had 20,000, just over 20,000, and we're at 19 already. The average answer time, the National Emergency Number Association has established a goal that agencies should be answering 90% of their calls within 15 seconds. We have an average answer time currently, year-to-date, of 4.1 seconds, and we are doing that 97.93% of the time. So we're answering very quickly, we're well within those national standards. There are some agencies in Missouri that have a 30-second answer time, so we are very fortunate that we can answer those calls quickly. An abandoned rate. An abandoned call is a call that has rung into a 911 center, but for whatever reason, was not answered. This number will never be zero. The reason why it will never be zero is because we are all guilty of calling 911 from our phone, and you look down and you see that you've called 911, and you hang up. And if it rang one time, that's an abandoned call. It's difficult to establish a benchmark of what is acceptable of an abandoned call. Again, using NINA standards, a benchmark, if you have a less than 5% abandoned rate, it's excellent. Five to eight is acceptable. 12 is pretty much average. So for 2025, we're currently at a 4.21% abandoned rate of our 911 lines. That does not equal an unresolved emergency situation, because every single abandoned call that we process requires phone contact or text contact with that number going back to them to determine that there is no emergency requiring intervention. Unfortunately, the majority of abandoned calls are missed dials. Something that had been asked previously is activity by venue. We've been able to separate calls from Pettis County and the City of Sedalia. Last year, we had 53,695 for the City of Sedalia, 13,155 for the county. And so far this year, the county has exceeded last year, so I'm going to anticipate that to continue to grow. But Sedalia appears to be trending, on average, of where they were last year. And a lot of the calls that we process aren't necessarily just from incoming calls. We process calls for service from a radio source, 911, and administrative phone lines. And looking at the venue versus their source for Pettis County in 2024, they had 41% of their calls for service coming in from the radio, and this year it's down to 37%. But you notice that they're trending up in receiving calls for service from the public. Whereas in Sedalia, you will notice a very slight purple bar in there. That is a front desk label. Those are customers walking into the police department to speak with someone directly versus calling in over the phone. Last year, the City of Sedalia had 41,000 in telephone and 20, I'm sorry, 41% and 21% telephone. And this year, that is down just a little bit, but the calls for service are up overall. As for our budget proposal, the typical percentage breakdown of a 911 center's budget should be less than 80% of their overall expense lines should be reflected in salaries and wages. That can be somewhat alarming to some people, because that is a large portion of the budget going specifically to people. We are well under the 80% guidance of that. People are our resource. That is our talent, so that is where the majority of our budget will go. Those salaries broken out, we have 258,000 in benefits, 519 in operational staff, and then we have 127 in administrative and support staff. So the bulk of that salary line item is actually going to operational needs and staffing our call center 24/7. Supplies and equipment, contractual expenses are traditionally the largest expense line item within our budget. This includes lease agreements, insurance premiums, technical or support contracts to maintain our operations. The equipment line item for 2026 is very small. The majority of the equipment that we needed for operations has been replaced this year due to that $1.2 million grant that we received. We have very little need forecasted for 2026, so there are no new projects on target for the 911 center. So therefore, that is going to help keep the additional contributions requested to a minimum. And not all of my labels came in. That's okay. So our proposed revenues for 2026, $425,000 is the base tax coming in from the any device fees, and then we have an additional 2% coming in from the prepaid taxes, which equates to approximately $20,000 annually. And this year, we will be requesting an additional $58,800 beyond the contractual base values of each contributing agency. This is a $12,000 increase from 2025, and while it is an increase, that amount has been presented to the 911 board, and we have been able to compromise and determine the most cost-effective way that we can establish services and maintain our level of operations and our level of care that we've already established. Our goals for 2026, we're looking for more efficient call handling procedures. We are going to be looking at reducing call processing times so that we can answer those calls faster, and we're going to conduct an in-depth analysis of the call-to-dispatch efficiencies. How can we create a more efficient call-for-service-to-responder dispatch point? As far as employee satisfaction and culture, it has been an ongoing effort since Pettis County Joint Communications was founded to turn around the culture of the industry. It has been a challenge, but I'm happy to say that we completed a state-of-the-agency survey with all of our employees last month, and 100% of our employees are satisfied with their employment and not seeking outside sources. We're going to work on strengthening our peer-agency relationships, community engagement, and public education. Thank you for your commitment to emergency communications. Does anybody have any questions?
Counsel, do I have any questions for Ms. Lauder?
What did you do with the $1.2 million?
That $1.2 million was specifically earmarked for next-gen, I'm sorry, next-generation 911 call handling platforms and equipment and services. So it was defined what the parameters of those funds could be used for. We replaced the call handling software that we use daily. That software that was originally put into the 911 center was placed in 2020, yes, the summer of 2020. The life expectancy of a 911 call handling system is five to seven years. It had reached that five-year mark, and it was due for an update anyway. We received the grant dollars, and we were able to go to the next-gen platforms, which will open up a lot more flexibility in our processing. We can accept, once the second part of the grant is fully executed, then we'll be able to accept pictures, media, text, and we'll have, instead of a 12-second location time, it's going to be reduced to milliseconds.
So you got new software, essentially?
Yes.
Okay, did you bid that?
That was actually procured through the state's grants, I'm sorry, through the state contractors and the approved vendors on that list, and it was handled by the Pettis County Office of Grants and Special Initiatives.
Any other questions, counsel? Thank you, Director Lauder.
All right, thank you.
Our second item is the Sedalia Police Department requests approval to apply for funding through the Patrick Lay Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program, a long-lasting federal initiative the city participates in annually. This program reimburses up to 50% of the cost of eligible body armor purchases and is planned for the department's annual budget to maintain officer safety and vest replacement on a five-year rotation. For the fiscal year 2027, the department intends to purchase 11 point-blank AX24 bulletproof vests at a total cost of $13,181.73, with an estimated reimbursement of $6,590.85. Approval of this item authorizes the staff to submit the grant application and proceed with the scheduled replacement cycle under the BVP program.
All right, call for the reading of Resolution 2153.
Resolution 2153. A resolution authorizing the Sedalia Police Department to act as an agent for the City of Sedalia in the application process for the FY- of Sedalia in the application process for the FY 2025 Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program Grant.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve Resolution 2153 in a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding that resolution? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. And that concludes public safety. Thank you, Chairman Scribner. Up next, we have Public Works. Chairwoman Franklin, you have the floor.
We have three items this evening. The first one is Public Works requests council authorization to proceed with the destruction of outdated department records in accordance with the Missouri Secretary of State's Record Retention Manual. The records proposed for destruction include right-of-way inspections from 2011 to 2013, grant records from 2004 to 2021, general correspondence from 2004 to 2011, and citizen correspondence from 2008 to 2015. These materials have met or exceeded the required retention periods. Approval of this request will allow staff to properly dispose of the documents in compliance with state retention and disposal requirements.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the destruction of the records?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Next, the state of Missouri, through the Department of Agriculture, has granted the city of Sedalia a permanent sanitary sewer easement associated with Missouri State Fair's new arena project. The easement allows the extension of wastewater line from the new arena located on East Clarendon Road to north of Katy Trail Connect with the city's existing sewer system near the intersection of Southwest Boulevard and Clarendon Road. City staff has reviewed the easement and accompanying legal description and found no discrepancies. Acceptance of the easement ensures proper connection of the facility to the city system in compliance with the project's requirement. Approval is recommended.
All right, call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-184.
Bill Number 2025-184.
All right, motion passes.
An ordinance approving and accepting a permanent sanitary sewer easement from the state of Missouri for extension of a sewer line for a new arena on the Missouri State Fairgrounds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. I have a motion to approve in a second. This would actually be a motion for second reading. This would actually be a motion for second reading. Yeah, I have a motion for second reading in a second. Yeah, I have a motion for second reading in a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding Bill Number 2025-184? Do I have any council discussion regarding Bill Number 2025-184? Having heard none, all those in favor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-184. Bill Number 2025-184. An ordinance approving and accepting a permanent sanitary sewer easement from the state of An ordinance approving and accepting a permanent sanitary sewer easement from the state of Missouri for extension of a sewer line for a new arena on the Missouri State Fairgrounds. Missouri for extension of a sewer line for a new arena on the Missouri State Fairgrounds.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. I have a motion to approve in a second. Any council discussion regarding Bill Number 2025-184? Any council discussion regarding Bill Number 2025-184? Have you heard none? Have you heard none? Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Bogus? Bogus?
Yes. Yes.
Hiller? Hiller?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cross? Cross?
Yes.
Yes.
Foster? Foster?
Yes. Yes.
Franklin? Franklin?
Yes.
Yes.
Robinson? Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right, motion passes.
And the final item, the utility department requests approval of an agreement with Duke's Root Control Incorporated to chemically treat 119,116 linear feet of sanitary sewer mains to control root intrusion, a common cause of blockages and damage in older infrastructure. The work uses a foaming herbicide roots to kill roots in the pipe without harming adjacent tree or vegetation. Pricing secured through HGUAC by Cooperative and aligns with the finance policies encouraging cooperative procurement. The quote of the cost is $39,806.19, which is within the current maintenance budget. The city has successfully used Dukes in the past with effective results and professional performance. Staff recommends approval to proceed.
All right, call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-185.
Bill Number 2025-185. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for chemical root control of sewer mains.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion in a second for the second reading of Bill Number 2025-185. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-185. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for chemical root control of sewer mains.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion for final passage in a second of Bill Number 2025-185. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Hiller?
Yeah.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right, motion passes. Moving along, we have an appointment. Go ahead and call for the reading of the appointment.
To members of the city council, from Mayor Andrew Dawson, regarding appointment to the Sedalia Area Tourism Commission, Matthew Wirt completing Calvin Shaw's term extending December 31, 2026.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding the appointment? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. And now we'll go ahead and move on to the liquor licenses. Call for the reading of the liquor licenses.
We have three new licenses tonight. We have a special event license for Christie Long doing business as Wildlife Ridge Winery at 34751 Miller Road, for Colcamp School Staff Christmas Party at the Foundry on December 12, 2025, from 4:00 p.m. to 12:59 p.m. A special event license for Christie Long doing business as Wildlife Ridge Winery for the Central Bank Christmas Party at the Foundry on December 13, 2025, from 4:00 p.m. to 12:59 p.m. And Hunter Bunker doing business at State Fair Spirits at 1419 South Limit for Liquor by the Drink and Sunday Sales.
Motion to approve and block.
Second.
I have a motion to approve and block in a second. Do I have any council discussion regarding any of those liquor licenses? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. The next item on our agenda is any miscellaneous items from the city council or city administrator. Does anyone have anything?
I have two items that I'd like to have tonight. The first one being, is there an update to the viaduct and the repair of it? Any new information?
The latest is waiting for the contractor to give us back the signed document and their bonds, and then we hope that they'll start very soon. That's what we're waiting on at the moment. We also are in the process of getting the documents together for a contractor or actually an engineering firm to do inspections along the way to make sure that the work is done properly. And then they would also perform the inspection portion of it that requires or that MODOT requires for the weight rating. So we hope to bring that to you in the next council meeting if we can get those all together. But, I mean, the project can still get started. Those are parts that will go along the way.
Okay, thank you. And the second item is just a point of information. I continue to hear how much money the council earns doing the jobs that they're doing. And I would just like to clarify and go on record and let the public know that we receive $146.34 every two weeks, which comes to $292.68 for one month. When you break that down, we receive $9.76 a day for the job that we do. I don't know where those other big numbers come from, but that's what we actually do receive.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Bogus. Do I have anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to add to Tina's deal there. When I first got on the council, about the third week that I was on the council, I kept track of every phone call I got, every going out, talking to people, time spent. I worked for .35 an hour. Well, you all work for .35 an hour because that's what I did. And that's fine. I'm here because I believe in this community. But you don't work. You don't even stand for the flag or the nothing. But anyway, I'm sorry, man.
We're not going to go back and forth tonight, guys.
I know. And I just want to say, I want to thank, I can get me rattled. I just want to thank our PR lady for the fine work you put together for Halloween. I don't believe in Halloween, but you did a great job putting all this together down here and all the volunteers. And there's a lot of kids that were smiling when they went out the door.
Thank you, Councilman Hiller. Anyone else? All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item, which is the good and welfare portion of the meeting. This is the time we've set aside for residents of Sedalia to address the city council directly. As a reminder, anyone wishing to speak must have signed up in advance using the form located in the lobby prior to the start of the meeting. That form requires your name, address, telephone number, and the agenda item you wish to address. Comments must relate to items on tonight's agenda unless a formal written request to speak on a non-agenda topic was submitted at least two business days in advance. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to present their remarks. Please clearly state your name and address for the record when you come to the microphone. This is not a time for debate or dialogue with council members. The council chambers is a limited public forum. All remarks must be directed to the council as a whole. I would remind everyone that personal attacks on specific city employees by name or title are not permitted. If you wish to file a formal complaint regarding an employee, you may do so in writing through the clerk's office. Disruptive behavior such as shouting, refusing to yield the floor, or blocking the view of others will not be tolerated, and violators may be asked to leave or remove by law enforcement if necessary. Your comments tonight will be part of the record as or part of the official public record. We thank you for your cooperation in maintaining decorum. At this time, we'll begin calling forward speakers, and we'll have Clerk Myers go ahead and do that.
I have two individuals, Mr. Mayor. Leroy Lefler, he wants to talk about services for the homeless and disabled.
All right, come on up, Mr. Lefler. Just please state your name and address for the record. You've got three minutes.
I'm DY Lefler. I live at Club 17 South Limit, Room 125. I see a lot of people in like wheelchairs and scooters, riding from downtown here to Walmart. I feel that we need to do something so they won't get hurt because a lot of traffic goes on West Main. And I feel that it needs something, it needs to be done, maybe like SiWats or make it wider so they can ride their things safely. And I feel that if there's a way, we here should try to help people homeless because they are part of our community too. They need help. Maybe some circumstances left them homeless. So we need like a shelter, for instance, for the homeless people because they really need our help. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lefler.
And the next one I have is Debbie Covington, and she wants to talk about the decorum ordinance and city council.
All right, come on up, Mrs. Covington.
Debbie Covington, PO Box 965, here in Sedalia. Under the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution and in Article 1, Section 8 of the Missouri Constitution, I stand here exercising a right that predates every one of us, the right to speak freely to our government. The right doesn't vanish when I step into City Hall. It doesn't depend on whether anyone agrees with me or whether anyone feels uncomfortable. This entire town and the state of Missouri could disagree with me for that matter, yet I am protected to say it. The First Amendment exists precisely to protect uncomfortable speech, the criticism, dissent, and accountability public officials should, should, want to hear. The Supreme Court has made it clear citizens have a right to criticize public officials in government operations. Missouri's Constitution goes even further, saying every person may freely speak, write, and publish on any subject, and that liberty shall never be restrained. That means legally and constitutionally, I could stand here and criticize each member of our city government. Jack, Cheryl, Lee, Tina, Andrew, Bob, Bob, Rhiannon, Michelle, Matt, Todd Smith, Lobber, Jessica Hoffman, any department by name for the full three minutes, and as long as I'm not threatening violence, is protected. Yet on April 21st, the city council passed Ordinance 12255, the anti-free speech ordinance, without a public hearing or dialogue. In fact, zero dialogue from council members and the mayor. It censors dissent. It tells citizens what we can talk about, when we can talk, and who we can talk about. It bans criticizing city employees by name, which is a direct violation of the First Amendment. It turns public participation into a permission-based privilege instead of a constitutional right. Let's be clear, you're breaking the law. And Lobber, your law firm is directly, is directing the mayor, council, and administrator, new administrator, to break it too. Matt, you're a former police chief. What's up with that? Lobber, what does this say about your firm's respect for constitutional rights? Each of you swore on oath to upload or to uphold the Constitution, not to rewrite it. The people's right to speak isn't granted by this council. It's protected from this council by the highest law of the land. Democracy isn't always tidy and comfortable, but the answer to a speech you dislike isn't to silence it, it's to listen, debate, and prove your ideas in the open. Your ordinance shows fear, not strength. What are you afraid of? Lobber doesn't even allow you all to have dialogue. They don't have the confidence in you all to have dialogue with us because they're afraid you're going to step in it. I ask for you to quit breaking the law, repeal the ordinance, instead adopt dialogue, apologize to Sedalia, lose the controlling spirit, and let's move forward. The Constitution doesn't end at the podium, it starts here.
All right, thank you for your comments, Ms. Covington.
That was the last one, Mr. Mayor.
That's all we have. Okay, very good. I will now entertain a motion to move to the closed session.
Motion to move to closed session pursuant to Subsections 1, 2, 3, and 12.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, second. Do I have any council discussion regarding that motion that's on the floor? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to return to the regular open meeting?
Motion to return to regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to return to the regular open meeting. Roll call, please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Here.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Here.
Call for the reading of Bill Number 2025-186.
Bill Number 2025-186. An ordinance approving a quitclaim deed for the sale of property commonly known as 705 North Quincy Avenue from the city of Sedalia, Missouri to DNR Property Investments LLC.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion in second for second reading of Bill Number 2025-186. Do I have any council discussion regarding that motion for second reading? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill Number 2025-186. An ordinance approving a quitclaim deed for the sale of property commonly known as 705 North Quincy Avenue from the city of Sedalia, Missouri to DNR Property Investments LLC.
Final passage?
I have a motion, second, for final passage of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding Bill Number 2025-186? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Meeting adjourned. Oh, wait. Uh, yeah, yep, we're good to go.